Today's invocation will be led by Bishop Damian Berry of God's Church. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We thank you this evening. We actually do to cover our President, President Jack Young. We actually do cover each council member. We actually do to every agenda that's on the program tonight be heard by you, God. We actually do to cover every guest that's here. We actually do bless the program. We actually do bless everyone that's speaking tonight. We actually do bless the finances of the city. We thank you for our mayor. For us in your holy and righteous name that we do pray. And we all said amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Bishop. The clerk will call the roles of the members.
President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark, Mr. President, Willie Quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Ms. Joanne Oakes of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Welcome.
Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. My name is Joanne Oakes, President. Delta Sigma Theta was founded on January 13, 1913, on the campus of Howard University by 22 collegiate women. A sisterhood of over 225,000 women, over 950 chapters. Our five-point programmatic thrusts include economic development, education, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, political awareness and involvement. Our chapter was chartered, the Baltimore Metropolitan Alumni, on March 1, 1987. Service to the Baltimore metropolitan area. Our public service committees include arts and letters, economic development, education, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, scholarship, social and political awareness. Our community involvement includes community health fairs at the Avenue Market, Delta Day at City Hall, economic development workshops, little free libraries, Matthew A. Henson Elementary School Partnership, March of Dime Walk, the Breast Cancer Awareness Walk, scholarship awards, voter education and registration, and youth mentoring programs. We have included, we have adopted Matthew A. Henson as a school partner, and we assist them with providing lesson plans that will teach the students how to advocate for themselves. Thanksgiving food drive for families in need, ice cream socials for perfect attendance. Students provide non-perishable food items to the Matthew A. Henson Food Bank, and we also assist in the back-to-school health fair and school supply drive. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again for all that you all do to help uplift our children and our community. Keep up the great work. This is Councilwoman Customs Generalized invocation. I ask for motion to generalize prayer. Motion by Vice President Ross Singer. Can I get a second? Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general proceeding from May 15. City Council meetings on the council members' desks.
There are motion to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of adopting the journal say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion is carried and the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two to four of the agenda. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 17-0075, zoning legislative authorizations corrective. For the purpose of deleting a council hearing deadline that fails to account for the required procedures and timeframes for seeking and obtaining preliminary agency reviews and reports to the council, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the council procedures for bills proposing legislative authorizations. Sponsored President Young, Cohen, Costello, Pinkett, Dorsey, Bullock, Riceinger.
Robert Stokes, Councilman Burnett is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark. Okay. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0076, Urban Renewal, Coldstream, Homestead, Montebello Amendment for the purpose of amending the Urban Renewal Plan for Coldstream, Homestead, Montebello to modify the provisions for certain land uses in the plan, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council. The Coldstream, Homestead, Montebello community, we call it CHUM, is the largest neighborhood in my district. Very proud of it. One of our plans, one of our goals in that neighborhood is to revitalize the Harford Road perimeter of the neighborhood as a retail area, which it is intended to be and is trying hard to be. This is an amendment to the neighborhood business, community business, and community commercial areas of the urban renewal plan, and it adds the following: "That street-facing ground-floor uses must be primarily retail or service establishments that deal directly with consumers, rely heavily on walk-in business, and have regular daily hours." In other words, we want people walking around, walking in and out of stores, sitting outside, having a meal, and being part of a larger community, and this is the perfect place for it. So we don't want any more backs facing Harford Road, our closed doors and windows. We want those, we want those areas of our, of our neighborhood to be facing people and inviting them in. Thank you.
Thank you. This bill is assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0077, repeal of Rosemont Urban Renewal Plan, Urban Renewal Area and Plan. For the purpose of repealing Ordinance 03-509 as amended by Ordinance 16-540, which established the Rosemont Urban Renewal Area and Plan and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0078, private streets, naming an unnamed 190-foot street located in the vicinity of 301 East Cromwell Street, Ry Street. For the purpose of naming an unnamed private 190-foot street located in the vicinity of 301 East Cromwell Street in Port Covington, Ry Street. Sponsor Costello.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0079, rezoning 2300 Edmondson Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 2300 Edmondson Avenue as outlined in Reddington Company Platt from the R7 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. Sponsor Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0080, rezoning 127, 129, 133, and 135 West West Street and 112, 20 Ray Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 127, 129, 133, and 135 West West Street as outlined in Blue and Company Platt from the OR1 zoning district to the TOD4 zoning district, and changing the zoning for the property known as 1220 Ray Street as outlined in Reddington Company Platt from the TOD1 zoning district to the TOD4 zoning district. Sponsor Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0081, rezoning 5717 and 5723 Harford Road. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 5717 and 5723 Harford Road as outlined in Reddington Company Platt from the R4 zoning district to the C2 zoning district. Sponsor Dorsey.
This has, did you want to speak to a councilman? This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0082, operating budget for Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. For the purpose of approving the budget estimated to be needed for Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for operating programs during fiscal 2018, providing for certification of approved budget to the state superintendent of schools and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee. Resolution to introduce.
City Council Resolution 17-0027R, a Baltimore comprehensive gun violence reduction strategy. For the purpose of calling on the mayor of Baltimore, the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore Police, the Baltimore City Police Department, Baltimore City Public Schools, and other relevant agencies to develop a comprehensive gun violence reduction strategy for Baltimore. Sponsor Scott, Cohen, Costello, Pinkett, Dorsey, Bullock, Clark, Riceinger.
Please note that Councilman Stokes is a co-sponsor, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Henry, Councilwoman Middleton, Councilman Schleifer, you, okay, any other, Councilwoman Sneed, and also Council President Young, Councilman Cohen. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council. Baltimore is suffering from a disease, and that disease is gun violence. However, for far too long, that disease has only been treated after someone has contacted it. We have simply approached gun violence as a policing issue in the city of Baltimore. Too many families and communities have been destroyed under this approach, so today I'm asking the mayor and all city agencies to develop a comprehensive gun violence reduction strategy and campaign so that we can attack violence strategically from all angles so that we can provide the opportunity for all Baltimoreans to live to be more. We are at 151 homicides in the city of Baltimore, and I would ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor them with a moment of silence later. And this is not a personal attack on anyone or anything that anyone's doing, but clearly the way we're operating today is not working. We need to look at this from more angles than we're looking at it. We need to dig down, dig deep into this issue and understand that that is the only way that we're going to make a long-term effect on violence in the city of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. You can find the consent calendar section there at the back of the agenda. There are motion to approve the consent calendar. Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion is carried and this calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to turn your attention to City Council, I'm sorry, Council Resolution, I'm sorry, I just had it. 425, congratulating William Johns on his performance at the World Master Games. Mr. Johns? I'm sorry, I thought he was here tonight. Okay, well, I, just for, for everyone to know, Mr. Johns is a city employee who, who runs. So, I'm sorry, did you say he's a graduate of MIRVO? Of course, so Councilman Scott, who is the official city repository of all MIRVO alumni who go on to do good things, has reminded us that Mr. Johns, as a MIRVO alum and a city employee, has been competing internationally representing Baltimore for several years. He came in fifth in the World Master Games for his age group. He is literally the fifth fastest man on the planet. These games were held in New Zealand, and we will be presenting him with a citation showing our, our pride and the fact that his, it was at his request that the citation reads hashtag proud resident of Baltimore City. So, thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to extend floor privileges to my special guests.
Stand up when you do that.
I move to extend floor privileges to my special guests.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of extending the floor privileges to the council's guests, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Your guests may take the floor.
Mr. President and colleagues, as you all know, Baltimore is bird town. As you also know, we have an outstanding Audubon Center in Baltimore that does extraordinary work to educate people about birds. But what you probably did not know is that Baltimore is home to the National Audubon Educator of the Year, and that person is standing to my right. Aaron Reed, Education Manager at Baltimore's Patterson Park Audubon Center, is a creative and passionate educator who engages a diverse urban-based, multilingual community to help birds and the places they need to survive and thrive. Aaron teaches nearly 350 programs annually. That's a lot. Aaron expertly guides her students aged two through adult through Audubon's Habitat Gardens in Patterson Park, exploring and interpreting the value of restored ecosystems. Aaron created a training for chapter volunteers to implement PPAC's Wildlife Gardening Workshop throughout the state of Maryland, dramatically expanding the reach of Audubon's Habitat Recognition Program in our state. Aaron's results improve Audubon's standing as an urban bird conservation leader in Baltimore and serve as guidance for the entire Audubon network. I am extremely proud to have the National Audubon Educator of the Year in the first district of Baltimore City. Please give a big round of applause to Aaron. And on behalf of the City Council of Baltimore, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Aaron Reed in recognition of receiving the National Audubon Society's Educator of the Year Award. Congratulations.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman, Council Vice President Middleton. Council Vice President.
I would like floor privileges to present a citation to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of extending the floor privileges to Council Vice President Middleton's guests, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion is carried, and your guests may take the floor.
And could all the Delta Sigma Theta wonderful ladies in red, please come up to And as they're walking up, I'll give some brief remarks before I present this citation to this. And we all want to, want to thank you for gracing City Hall with your presence this year, as you continue to do every year. It's always nice to see so many intelligent, innovative, and pioneering women dressed in your red. Today, I am honored to present this citation to your organization, and I'm equally honored to have Delta Community Center in the 6th District. I have seen firsthand the wonderful work that you do and the positive impact you have on the community. There is a quote that says, "Tell the world what you intend to do, but first show it." And the Deltas are about work, and you surely show it. Thank you for all that you do and the lives you impacted. May God bless you, and may the light on your candle continue to burn bright as you uplift and inspire ladies to make their mark on the world by first starting with themselves. And of course, I want to, on behalf of Councilwoman Shannon Sneed and myself, we want to thank you for honoring both of us at your yearly event. We were humbled by your helping us to continue to be strong and move forward. So that being said, this citation is presented today, the City Council Baltimore Resolution. Be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., Baltimore Alumni and Baltimore Metropolitan Chapters in recognition of Delta Day in City Hall. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion, and directs this resolution be presented on this 5th day of June. Signed by the President Bernard C. Jack Young and all members. And here you go, congratulations. And, Mr. President, would you like to come down for a picture? And all council members, if we could somehow formulate and squeeze in some kind of way, if you'd like to join in on the picture, please do.
Let's give them a hand and thank them again. We will now move to bills on second reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke Rule 10-11B2 so that the Budget and Appropriations Committee can offer a report on City Council Bill 17-0065.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of invoking the rule, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the committee can report on the bill. The clerk will read the bill into record.
City Council Bill 17-0065, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. For the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during fiscal 2018 year.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we held hearings on May 16, as well as May 30, May 31, June 1, June 2, and today, June 5. We had over 48 hours worth of hearings last week. I'd like to take a moment to thank Karik Huntz from the president's office, Marguerite Curran, staff to the committee. Charm TV for changing their schedule and recording it. Karen Stokes, Karan Banks, and Pete Hammond from the mayor's office, who, in the committee's In my opinion, have, have done yeoman's work this week in trying to work with the council in good faith. And especially Vice Chair of the committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett. Thank you, Councilman. Right now, we've been very clear on what our priorities are on this council. It's about 13 and a half million dollars, and it focuses on education, youth activities, and programming. This council and the committee have not changed its position on that. Unfortunately, at this time, we don't have a deal. We have cut 14 line items from the budget. $2,35,596, the entirety of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. $773,679 from the Innovation Fund. $1 million for Mobile Workforce Center. $600,000 for new high-capacity trashcans, the Big Bellies. $2 million from the Office of the Police Commissioner. $6 million from unallocated debt service. $2,729,178, $178 from the municipal trashcan, the entirety of that. $430,500 from special studies that have been historically underspent. $600,000 from the retrofit of the Northwest Transfer Station for Small Holler Initiative. $3,831,218 from the Be More Bright Streetlight Initiative. $363,000 for four new wellness administration positions. $1 million, $1 million and $50,000 from the mayor's special events budget. $5,119,514 to completely eliminate the mechanical street sweeping program. And $36,987 from a new laborer position at Public Works. In total, these cuts amount to $26,519,672. What we're asking for is 13 and a half million dollars to fund what we believe is a shared value and priority with the administration for our youth out of a $3.9 billion budget. This Bureau of Budget and Management Research has undermined these negotiations at each and every single step of the way. Their policies and the process that they've used to do this process with us, in my opinion, has not been in good faith. We had a budget director who came before this council on Friday night and lied to this committee. That is completely unacceptable. Under no circumstances should we have a budget director that can't tell this committee the truth, that continues to move the goalposts. We want a partnership with the mayor, Mr. President. We direly want a partnership with this mayor, and we know that Mayor Pugh wants a partnership with this council. And I'm very confident that we're going to get a deal. This is not the end. But we're very serious about funding those priorities. And this council has been explicitly clear that under no scenario will we back down from what those priorities are, which are funding our youth and helping to close the gap for city schools. And we're unanimous in that today, Mr. President. Absolutely unanimous. So with that, I'd like to move the committee amendments, which should be on my colleague's desk. And, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for roll call.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Mr. President, I'd like to call for roll call.
Roll call.
President Young?
Yes.
President Young, yes. Councilman Cohen?
Mr. President, a few weeks ago, I brought a young man into these chambers who had been shot in the back. We are experiencing a violence crisis in our city like no other, and young people in Baltimore deserve and expect leadership from this building right here. It is for that reason that I appreciate the leadership of my colleague Chairman Costello, your leadership in driving a negotiation that is fair, that is reasonable, but that puts the priorities of youth and safety above all else. Thank goodness that young man had an after-school program there to support him after he was shot. Thank goodness he had an after-school program to help him stay on track and get into college. That is what we are fighting for. It is not a stretch to say that these types of programs save lives in our city. Therefore, I vote yes.
Councilman Cohen, yes. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am a little disappointed that we're at this point. Like my colleague said, we are experiencing unprecedented amounts of violence on the streets of Baltimore, and while we are now arguing to restore cuts to after-school and safe streets and other programs that we need, we are talking about 13 million dollars out of a $3 billion budget. We should not be arguing about restoring these cuts. The argument should be, how can we have more after-school programs? How can we have more safe street sites? How not, how can we stay as-is to prevent? Because let me tell people what's going to happen if safe streets goes away. Those 60 guys that are employed who want you to be out there on those corners with those guns are going to go back to that, because who else is going to hire them? They have problems getting jobs as-is, and what's going to happen to? Who's going to be the person that's going to intercede when somebody is running down the street chasing another person with a gun or thinking about killing another person? Who else is going to go out onto the corner? Who else in the city can do that and stop people from doing that? This is what we're talking about here, and for that reason, I vote yes.
Councilman Scott, yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. I want to reiterate what Councilman Scott has said, the importance of safe street, and what Councilman Costello said. You know, we have priorities here, the safety of citizens in Baltimore City and the preservation of youth priorities. A couple of, and, and we're clear about that. This, this council has boots on the ground, frontline of what's going on in the communities that we represent. We hear it loud and clear from the citizens of Baltimore City, and we are unanimous. And, you know, I want to, I want to kind of reinforce that by saying, a couple, couple weeks ago, I went to Councilman Costello's office to talk about some priorities that, you know, I think that we should have as a city. And, because I believe we all have things that we'd like to see happening here, but we're willing to come to the table, ready to compromise with an understanding that we just can't do everything all at once, all the time. And, you know, Councilman Costello said to me, "Look, we've already begun stating what our priorities are, and to begin to add significant amounts of money to that at this point in the negotiation would not leave us..." in a state where he believed we would be negotiating in good faith. That we have held to what... where he believed we would be negotiating in good faith. That we have held to what we have said are our priorities as a council. And I want to commend Councilman Costello and Vice Chair of the Budget Committee for holding fast and doing an outstanding job representing this council and our values in the negotiations so far. And I'm thankful to stand here and say, yes, I vote yes.
Councilman Dorsey, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilman Schleifer? Councilman Schleifer, yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton, Councilman Pinkett.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chairman Costello said, we're talking about a nearly $4 billion budget, and as a council, we're asking for 13.5 million. I'll just let that settle in for a minute. We're pretty much talking about pennies.
You're going to let it marinate for a while?
Well, Councilman Schleifer told me I couldn't let it marinate too long. But when you think about the scope of $4 billion, what we're talking about are merely pennies. And as has been said, we already have a city where there's 151 murders just this year. We are making history for all the wrong reasons. And what underscores that is not only the youth that are perpetuating the violence, but those who are victims of the violence. And we're not talking about, you know, asking for issues that are specific to our own council districts, where someone might be interested in potholes or streets, or we're talking about the future of our city. And I'm proud to serve with Councilman Costello on the Budget Committee, but I think I'm more proud about the solidarity that's been represented by this council. I think we are making it clear to the constituents of this city that we heard your voice, and that we care, and that even if the children that we are reaching out might not be our own, might not be blood-related, they are still important to us. And so, unequivocally, vote yes.
Councilman Pinkett, yes. Councilman Burnett? Councilman Burnett, yes. Councilman Bullock? Councilman Bullock, yes. Councilman Reisinger?
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to echo Councilman Pinkett. He hit the nail on the head. I just want to say that in the 20 years I've been in the council, this is the first time I've seen the council solidified regards to the budget. And I think the reason for that is because every member in this council has the priority of education in our kids. And I just want to give kudos and thank you to the Chair and the Vice Chair because they brought this council together. They communicated with us on every budget situation, line item. So I want to thank both of yous for the great job you've done, and I vote yes.
Councilman Reisinger, yes. Councilman Costello?
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Councilman Dorsey. We may not always see eye to eye, but I really appreciate what you said. And there are other of our colleagues that had other priorities. And I could echo everything that everyone said. It's all of value, and it's all important, and it's all spot-on. But what Councilman Pinkett said and Councilman Reisinger about us all being on the same page and putting the shared priorities of this entire city ahead of our own individual priorities in each of our respective districts speaks volumes about what this council is about. I'm pleading, absolutely pleading with Mayor Pugh and the administration, please work with us to get a deal done. We are ready to get a deal done with you. But we're not backing down from these priorities. I vote yes.
Councilman Costello, yes. Councilman Stokes? Councilman Stokes, yes. Councilwoman Sneed?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that it's so important. I'm so happy that this entire council is standing together to make sure that our kids, and when I say literally our kids, even to my little baby who's with me on many a days, it's so important that these kids get what they need in after-school programming when parents are working. It takes a village to raise a child, to all kids. And so, just thank you for everyone who's standing with our children to make sure they have a better future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sneed, yes. Councilwoman Clark?
She said yes. You said yes, right? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
She gets two votes. Mr. President, members, I just want to do a little history. It was the Baltimore City Council that created the Children and Youth Budget several years ago. And I think this year is a coming, this moment, is a coming to fruition of a lot that many people worked hard to establish and hold on to. And one of the rules of it, one of the principles of the Children and Youth Budget, once it was created and we held on to it, and it arrived in its glory here today, really, one of the things about it was that you don't take away from children things you've already given them and that they rely and depend on. We have thousands of children who will lose their after-school care, their community school services, if we should fail through negotiations and this vote and working with the mayor and each other. If we should fail to come to the 13 and a half million dollars we require not to really get ahead, but to not fall back and let children who've finally gotten into after-school care into these programs, let them now be abandoned. Children never forget that. And it would be going against all the principles on which this whole budget was created in the first place. And finally, I'd like to say, on the very first day of budget hearings this round, the budget people walked in and said there was a $13 million surplus in the city budget. And I said, I turned around and said, well, our work is done. Our work is done. We certainly deserve the surplus for the children of Baltimore City. And that's what this vote is about. And thanks for letting me be part of a group that sticks together all the way. It's a privilege.
Councilwoman Clark, yes.
Vote yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended and ask for roll call.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor, oh, roll call.
President Young?
Yes.
President Young, yes. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen, yes. Councilman Scott? Councilman Scott, yes. Councilman Dorsey? Councilman Dorsey, yes. Councilman Henry? Councilman Dorsey, yes. Councilman Henry, yes. Councilman Schleifer? Councilman Schleifer, yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Pinkett? Councilman Pinkett, yes. Councilman Burnett? Councilman Burnett, yes. Councilman Bullock? Councilman Bullock, yes. Councilman Reisinger? Councilman Reisinger, yes. Councilman Costello? Councilman Costello, yes. Councilman Stokes? Councilman Stokes, yes. Councilwoman Sneed? Councilwoman Sneed, yes. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark, yes.
This bill moves to third read. I wanted to thank Chairman Costello, the Budget Chair of his entire committee, and even Karik Kuntz from my office, who have worked in good faith. And even though we all have different priorities that we would like to put into the budget, we have held firm to what we have all agreed to. And that's because of Councilman Costello holding the line. He had framed Rain as the Council Chair of the Budget Committee. He kept me well-informed. Karik Kuntz and my staff kept me well-informed of just about every meeting that they had. I think I was in maybe two or three. But the majority of those meetings was handled by Chairman Costello and his Vice Chair and his committee. And I want to commend the committee, and I want to commend this council. This is the first time, as President of this council, that everybody has really stuck to our guns because our priorities are just as important as anybody else's priorities. And it's all about the kids. We always talk about the negative things that our kids do, but we never put the resources in place for our kids. And I know that our kids are looking at us, and they're wondering, do they really care? You know, you look at the school buildings, yeah, we got the 21st Century Schools, but when you look at the schools that they're learning in with no air conditioning, and it just looked like uninviting to children. So I'm really extremely happy with this council, and I hope that we continue to stand together on many more issues as we represent the citizens of Baltimore. And I don't think that the mayor is that far apart from us. We want to continue the negotiations, but we're serious about our priorities. And if our priorities don't get met, then we have, what was it, 26 million? Can you stand up and recite how many millions of dollars are to be cut from this budget?
14 line items for $26,519,672, Mr. President.
And we don't want to do that. So we're calling on the administration and the Bureau of Budget and Management to come back, work with our Chair and our Vice Chair and Karik Kuntz and the committee to get this done. We only have a couple more meetings, and, you know, we don't know what is going to take place, but we're hoping that we can strike a deal to get this done. So again, thank you to all the council people. Give yourselves a hand. Executive Appointments Committee?
EA 17-0001, Eadhar Ayera, Member, Community Relations Commission, 10th District.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on nominees for the Youth Commission, Community Relations Commission, and Wade Commission on May 24th. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Reisinger. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0012, Karen York, Member, Community Relations Commission, 14th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0023, Keegan K. Taylor, Member, Youth Commission, District 1.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Cohen. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0024, Makai Jeffers, Member, Youth Commission, District 2.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0025, Theodore LaBonte Clark, Member, Youth Commission, District 3.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0026, Chandra D. Davis, Member, Youth Commission, District 4.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0027, Alexander Friedman, Member, Youth Commission, District 5.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0028, Atticus Cameron, Member, Youth Commission, District 6.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion, Karik, this nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0029, Miles McIntyre, Member, Youth Commission, District 7.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0030, Eva Wise, Member, Youth Commission, District 8.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0031, Darryl Hebrin, Member, Youth Commission, District 9.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0032, Arius Prince, Member, Youth Commission, District 10.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Reisinger. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0033, Alexandra M. Owen, Member, Youth Commission, District 11.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0034, Mercedes Thompson, Member, Youth Commission, District 12.
Chair recognizes Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. All those in favor, this nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0035, Darius Farrar, Member, Youth Commission, District 13.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Sneed. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nominee is confirmed.
EA 17-0036, Destiny K. Davis, Member, Youth Commission, District 14.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0037, Andrea Moreno, Member, Youth Commission, At-Large.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0038, Isaiah Wilson, Member, Youth Commission, At-Large.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor confirm this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0039, Claudia Henry, Member, Youth Commission, At-Large.
Can you get in your seat? You can't? Okay. Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of confirm this nominee, say aye. All opposed, nay. Please note that Councilman Henry is passing. There's a pass. This nomination is confirmed. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee?
City Council Bill 17-0040, City Streets Closing Beds of Two 10-Foot Alleyes Bound by West 27th Street, Fox Street, West 28th Street, and Remington Avenue for the purpose of condemning and closing the beds of two 10-foot alleys bound by West 27th Street, Fox Street, West 28th Street, and Remington Avenue as shown on Platte 78, 3021A in the Office Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President. So on May 25, 2017, the committee heard this bill, which is designed to aid the construction of residential housing development in the Remington neighborhood. There are no amendments, and I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves to third read. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee?
City Council Resolution 17-0022R, informational hearing moving Baltimore to zero waste for the purpose of requesting that representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Health Department, Baltimore City Public Schools, the Office of Sustainability, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and other city agencies involved in waste reduction efforts in Baltimore appear before the City Council along with experts on zero-waste efforts nationwide to discuss the development of a zero-waste plan in Baltimore that will advance sustainability, public health, and job creation.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark for her leadership in bringing this issue to the attention of the council. We held a hearing, I believe, on May 16th, had a very productive discussion about zero waste, and I would defer to the Councilwoman if you have any comments. Yes, you do, ma'am.
Zero waste is really a national movement among especially cities, and it means just what it says. And I think in this term of office coming up, it gives us an overall umbrella under which to put so many of the concerns of the city, trash on the street, litter, trash in the air that we breathe. And so, basically, zero waste in one city of Portland, for example, which is of comparable size to ours, just by diverting trash instead of burning and burying it, and they're just getting underway, they estimate that they have already saved 438,000, the equivalent of greenhouse gas emissions eliminated, the equivalent of 438,000 cars being taken off the road. In other words, it's not just the litter on the street, but it is that. It's the litter in the air and in the water and in what we breathe. So I'm hoping this council, such as it is, which is a great one, will come together to help us be a zero-waste neighborhood, a zero-waste city. We can do this and clean up really well. Our agencies are ready to roll. So are the people. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. President, I move the resolution favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Oh, you want to say something, Councilman? We have to get a written amendment, Councilman. All those in favor adopting this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Chairman Costello?
Mr. President, I'd like to move to amend, to add Councilman Stokes as a cosponsor?
We need a written amendment. Okay, all those in favor adopting this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is adopted. Labor Committee?
City Council Bill Seventeen dash zero zero four-eight, Labor and Employment, Displaced Service Workers Protection for the Purpose of Requiring Success or Entities Taking Over Certain Terminated Contracts, Terminated Service Contracts to Retain Employees Who Worked on the Previous Contracts Under Certain Conditions, Requiring the Disclosure of Information When Service Contracts Are Terminated in Certain Circumstances, Prohibiting Retaliation Against Workers for Seeking Assistance From or Cooperating With the Wage Commission, Empowering the Wage Commission to Issue Subpoenas and Administer Oaths Defining Certain Terms, Establishing Certain Penalties, and Irrelating to Protections of Displaced Service Workers.
Chair recognizes Chairwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on Thursday, May eighteenth, and there are amendments on all you all's desk. However, there was an error in the amendments, and we needed a rewrite of the amendments from the legal sufficiency, so I move the committee amendments at this point.
The motion fails for lack of a second. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed?
I move the floor amendments favorably. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill is amended. Chair recognizes Chairman Sneed?
Thank you, Council President.
Now you move the bill forward. Chairwoman Sneed?
No, you have to move.
So, now I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage?
City Council Bill Seventeen dash zero zero three zero, Tax Credit, Citywide High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Extension Eligibility for the Purpose Extending the Date for Termination of the Tax Credit Program for Newly Created, for Certain Newly Constructed or Converted Market Rate Rental Housing Projects Conforming and Correcting Related Provisions and General Relating to Property Tax Credits. President Young, Cohen, Scott. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Henry, even though he was on this bill, passes. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Seventeen dash zero zero three five, City Streets Closing West Trenton Street for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing West Trenton Street Extending from Shrick Alley Westerly, one hundred thirty-five feet, more or less, towards Falls Road, as shown on Platte Sixty-one-A, Thirty-eight, and the Office Department of Transportation and Providing for a Special Effective Date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Seventeen dash zero zero three six, Sailor Property, Former Bed of West Trenton Street. For the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell, Is the Public a Private Sale? All Its Interests in a Certain Parcel Land Known as the Former Bed of West Trenton Street Extending from Shrick Alley Westerly, one hundred and thirty-five feet, more or less, towards Falls Road, and All Need for Public Use and Providing for a Special Effective Date. President Young, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Seventeen dash zero zero four five, City Streets Naming an Unnamed Fifteen-Foot Lane Located in the Vicinity of Williams Street and Beachwood Avenue, Unity Lane. For the Purpose of Naming an Unnamed Fifteen-Foot Lane Located in the Vicinity of Williams Street and Beachwood Avenue in the Franklintown Community and Measuring Approximately Three Hundred Fifteen Feet East of Williams Street Intersection and Approximately One Hundred Twenty Feet West of Williams Street Intersection, Unity Lane. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Seventeen dash zero zero four six, City Property Renaming Harlem Dennison Park to be the William Donald Schaefer Park for the Purpose of Changing the Name of Harlem Dennison Park Located at Thirty-four Twenty-One Harlem Avenue to the William Donald Schaefer Park. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee Announcements. Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing tomorrow, Tuesday, June sixth, at ten a.m., and that will be reconvening Council Bill Seventeen dash zero zero six-six, Annual Property Tax for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Eighteen. Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules to announce a hearing, Rules Ten Two and Ten Three.
Second by Councilman Reisinger. All those in favor of suspending rules and announcing a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing tomorrow, Tuesday, June sixth, at ten a.m. for Council Bill Seventeen dash zero zero eight-two, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June thirty, Two Thousand Eighteen. Colleagues, as a reminder, we did hear this bill already on Thursday, June first. This will essentially be a voting session. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee Announcements. Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, June fifteenth, the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be hearing Council Bill Seventeen dash zero zero six-eight, the Waterfront Management District Extension of District. That will be at two p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move for suspension of the rules, Ten dash twelve and Ten dash three.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of suspending rules and announcing a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
The committee will hold a hearing on Bill Seventeen dash zero zero seven-five on Wednesday, July twelfth, at one p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning legislative authorization. Mr. President, I move for suspension of rules, Ten dash two and Ten dash three.
Second by Councilwoman Sneed. All those in favor of suspending rules and announcing a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
This committee will hold a hearing on Bill Seventeen dash zero zero eight-zero on Wednesday, July twelfth, at one fifteen p.m. in the council chambers. This is a rezoning at one-twenty-seven, one-twenty-nine, one-thirty-three, and one-thirty-five West Street and twelve-twenty Russell Street, Re Race Street. Mr. President, I move for suspension of the rules, Ten dash two and Ten dash three.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of suspending rules and announcing a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
The council will have a hearing on Bill Seventeen dash zero zero eight-one on Wednesday, July twelfth, at one-thirty p.m. in the council chambers. This is a rezoning at fifty-seven seventeen and fifty-seven twenty-three Hartford Road. Mr. President, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill Seventeen dash zero zero four-two on Wednesday, July the nineteenth, at one p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning conditional use conversion of a one-dwelling unit to a two-dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district of variance located at twenty-three zero four North Fulton Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before I recognize Councilman Scott, the city council may consider the adoption of the fiscal year Two Thousand Eighteen tax rate at the next meeting of the city council on Monday, June the twelfth, at five p.m. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I first rise to, for a reminder to say that tomorrow at four p.m. here in the council chambers, the city council's Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing for Bill Seventeen dash zero zero six-three, and that's the Advisory Commission for, Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety. Also, I am announcing a hearing Legislative Oversight Seventeen dash zero zero one-eight on Tuesday, June the thirteenth, one p.m. here in the DuBarnes Chambers. It's an emergency legislative oversight hearing about Zika, calling on the Health Commissioner to brief the city council on the Zika virus and its impact on Baltimore and the Health Department's strategic response. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Hold up, Councilman. Councilman, do you have committee announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chair recognizes Councilman Sneed.
No.
I mean, Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen. Sorry, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I-
Chairman Cohen.
Thank you. So the Education and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, June seventh, at five p.m. at War Memorial. It is a hearing supporting Baltimore's community schools. Throughout the past couple weeks, we have been in negotiation about funds to support community schools and after-school funding. Now we'll get a chance to hear from some of the young people that benefit from these programs. The only invited speakers at this hearing are youth who participate in these programs, so I invite all of my colleagues, as well as everyone, to come out Wednesday at five p.m. at the War Memorial.
Committee announcements, any more committee, regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. In our last council meeting, I spoke about a play called "The King of Howard Street," written by homeless advocate in Baltimore, Anthony Williams, directed by the new director of the Theater Department at the Baltimore School for the Arts, opening and running for the last four weeks at a new venue made possible through the city of Baltimore's sale of decades-long vacant property called Le Mondo on Howard Street in the eleventh district. The theater company, Annex Theater, was very proud to exceed all of their goals, including adding an entire matinee show last Saturday entirely bought out by healthcare for the homeless, eighty tickets in the house, and I was proud to also send the Youth Arts Commission, rather, Youth Arts Council from BOPA to a showing last Saturday night. So thank you to all of our colleagues and everybody in Baltimore who showed up to that. I think that's a really great event that I'm glad was supported so well. Coming up before our next council meeting in the arts in Baltimore, running from June, it's already open, but the opening reception is this Saturday in the fourteenth district at Fleckenstein Gallery, which happens to be owned by third district resident Terry Fleckenstein, is the artist's reception and kickoff party for Inside Out and the Artscape Gallery Network, and in this year it's going to showcase Sondheim finalists' work in galleries around the city. So this is the kickoff for that, which will run before, during, and after Artscape. So check that out this Saturday on Keswick at Fleckenstein Gallery and get into the know on what's happening around the Sondheim finalists' and Artscape this year. Thanks.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this past Saturday at Radaki Play Field, the newly renovated Radaki Play Field in the second district, the Orioles had their annual clinic with little leaguers from across the city of Baltimore, where Oriole Adam Jones, Al Bumery, they got involved with our young people and spent the day teaching them the basics of baseball, so I just want to say publicly thank you to the Orioles and congratulations to all the young people that participated. Also, I'd like to remind everyone in Baltimore that BNBL basketball has started. You can get the information on Recreation and Parks' website. That's just BCRP.baltimorecity.gov, and go out and check out some of the thousands of young people, both young men and women, who are playing in BNBL basketball this season. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman, Council Vice President Reisinger, Council Vice President Middleton. I'm getting better. I'm getting better.
Is this working?
Please don't say that. I'm getting better.
Um, we have a moment of silence for the families of the one-hundred-and-fifty-one victims, and also a moment of silence for the future of this city as we, as the council, work through our budget process. And also a moment of silence for Esther Bonnet, Dr. Rosetta Steeth, and Ms. Earlene McKennan.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the twelfth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.